While solar power recently took center stage during a festival in Boyle Heights, where harnessing power from the sun was all the rage. This icy street vending cart runs completely on solar energy. The solar-powered cart was designed by students from the Boyle Heights Charter School, CAIO Youth Build, which helps young people identify issues within their community and create solutions.
The solar panels have created a charging dock, so we have, so folks can charge their phones. We have Wi-Fi on this thing, you know, so folks could help, could get access to the Internet.
Folks gathered to enjoy a music and art festival in East LA recently that was completely powered by solar power. This first-ever solar event highlighted the benefits of using solar energy.
We're showing how easy it is today and how technology has advanced to be able to get our energy from alternative forms of energy and not rely on the local grid, which we get a majority of our energy from coal.
Councilmember Jose Huizar said it's important to start using other forms of energy and reduce our dependence on coal, as the fossil fuel is the leading contributor of global warming, changing climate, and causes various health issues.
What we're here for today is to promote solar power energy and what the wonderful things it could do to our, you know, society here, our cultura.
Huizar said that while installing solar panels in your home or business may be costly now, the long-term impact will have great financial and environmental benefit. The city even has programs that can help businesses and homeowners switch to solar. Various vendors were also on hand educating folks on how they can take advantage of other programs to incorporate clean energy into everyday use.
We want to make sure that families all over Los Angeles, but especially on the East Side, are able to access the potential of solar power, of clean energy, save money on their bills, and to create cleaner air in our communities.
The city of LA has made a commitment to stop using coal energy by the year 2025. More than 350 East Side residents came out for the festival. While the city is also focusing on solar power to make trash collection cleaner, more earth-friendly, and more efficient, councilmember Curran Price has teamed up with a company called Big Belly to bring high-tech trash cans to his ninth council district. Anna Marcos takes a look.
These kids have got front-row seats as trash collection goes solar and high-tech along South LA's Central Avenue corridor. This new Big Belly solar-powered trash station even has a compactor for the trash, which means it can hold even more litter.
First of all, you get about a five-to-one ability in terms of holding more trash, which means less trucks on the street, cleaner streets.
This trash can is so smart, it actually alerts city workers when it's time for trash to be collected, which makes trash collection a lot more efficient.
With this technology, our staff spends, we'll have to spend less time emptying trash cans and more time concentrating on other efforts in the area of beautification.
Councilmember Curran Price plans to install 31 of the Big Belly trash stations along Central and Grand Avenues and along Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Well, the result, again, is creating the kind of living environment, you know, that's going to be safe and clean for our families, places that you'll enjoy not just living in, but also shopping in. This is a major commercial area. We're doing lots of things to enhance the desirability of the area.
I feel proud of living here. I see a lot of improvement.
The city of LA now has about 250 of the high-tech trash stations. And as they work to cut down on the amount of trash that goes to landfills, city leaders are also hoping even their trash collection leaves less of a carbon footprint. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Big Belly trash stations are fast becoming the new trend. There are now about 30,000 installed worldwide in 47 countries. While city officials urge residents to take care of their pets during an emergency, raising awareness for childhood cancer, and a service that helps patients get dental care without leaving their home, all these stories in City Beat. Surrounded by in-service horses and dogs, the Los Angeles Fire Department gathered at the Frank Hotchkin Memorial Training Center with city officials to remind Angelenos about the importance of having an evacuation plan for your pets and animals during fires and other emergencies. Officials say having a plan in place for your pets will help ensure the safety and survival for the rest of your family, especially during fire season.
To make sure you practice getting your cat into a crate so that in case of emergency, you're not scrambling around trying to find fluffy and trying to shove fluffy in a carrier while your house is on fire.
Being prepared could mean the difference between life and death.
A few safety tips include making sure your pets and animals are microchipped, and you have a rolling backpack with emergency supplies, food, and water ready to go. Children's Hospital Los Angeles joined forces with councilmember Jose Huizar to honor childhood cancer awareness and Hispanic Heritage Month. Huizar recognized the Children's Center for Cancer with a resolution thanking them for all the work they do on behalf of families struggling with childhood cancer. The disease hits close to home for Huizar, whose daughter was treated at the Center for Leukemia when she was just three years old. Huizar wants Latino families that may have a child with cancer to know that help is available.
We want to make sure that we are telling them we're with them, that there are a lot of support systems out there.
A teledentistry demonstration recently took place at the Kingsley Manor Retirement Community for seniors who are unable to receive proper dental care. This virtual dental demonstration delivered affordable dental care for seniors in the comfort of their homes. Dental experts say more than half the population is not getting regular dental care, particularly low-income seniors.
And six years of demonstration clearly showed that the model worked, that we were able to reach people who weren't getting regular dental care, have diagnostic and preventive services, keep people healthy on-site, as opposed to having them end up with toothaches and infections and all the other problems of neglected dental disease.
Dr. Paul Glassman said this mobile dental service can be used in many different locations, such as nursing homes, Head Start, and community centers, elementary schools, and residences for people with disabilities. While the city of LA braces for El Nino like a horror movie sequel, heavy rains are expected to wreak havoc on Southern California once again. But as Gil Reyes reports, there are things homeowners can do to weather the storm.
Nearly 18 years after El Nino rains pounded the state, the storm pattern that toppled trees, crushed cars, and flooded streets is expected to return with a vengeance.
So we can't prepare for everything, but what we can do is really have a communications plan starting now with the public on things they can do.
Councilman Mitchell Englander, chair of the Public Safety Committee, wants the media to encourage preparation at home before rains arrive later this fall. The good news is, the city says it's ready on their end. LA sanitation officials say all catch basins and storm drains are cleared and checked regularly to support the expected log jam of water and debris.
LA city agencies say they're more prepared now than ever before to deal with the possibility of severe flooding, like the type that typically happens here at the Sepulveda Basin. Part of the reason is improved coordination between agencies in terms of response and preparation. Now it's time for the public to do their part.
So what we want the public to do is conserve the use of wastewater and flushing.
Adele Hagik Khalil of LA Sanitation says limiting water use in the kitchen and bathroom, especially on rainy days, will help prevent clogging the sewer system. He also reminds residents to secure loose items like trash and recycling bins, which can easily block storm drains. This month, it took just one garbage bin to block a drain and cause havoc in Temple City on a rainy day.
Blocked it, and the entire neighborhood flooded.
Englanders are also urging people to invest in rain barrels. The city offers $100 rebates per barrel. They save water, money, and even possibly your street from sewer overflow.
But I think we're prepared. We're going to do everything we can to prevent that from happening, but the public can't help us.
Preparing for El Nino. Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Councilmember Englander's committee is preparing a more expansive media blitz for El Nino preparations. Expect that in early November. While city leaders and students in Los Angeles marked International Walk to School Day by walking to campus, that's the focus of this week in tweets. LA Mayor Eric Garcetti's office tweeted a pic of the mayor and councilmember Curran Price walking to school with some kids, posting, "We're celebrating Walk to School Day today at Dolores Huerta Elementary School." Price posted a pic with the mayor and a few students, writing, "Had fun walking with Mayor Garcetti and dozens of children to Dolores Huerta Elementary School in the new ninth. What a great way to get some physical activity and raise awareness on the importance of pedestrian safety." Councilmember Mitchell Farrell also tweeted a pic of him walking to school with students. He wrote, "What a great turnout for Walk to School Day at Grant Elementary in East Hollywood. Thank you to the school's principal for hosting us." And Great Streets retweeted a post from Streets Blog, which showed some kids walking with police officers. The post read, "Aww, some heartwarming moments from Walk to School Day." And that's a look at this week in tweets. While families in Panorama City are getting on board as they celebrate new improvements in their neighborhood recreation center. This new green-and-yellow makeshift train has just arrived to its new home at the Sepulveda Rec Center, and the neighborhood kids didn't waste any time climbing onboard. The train is part of a newly completed play area for kids in Panorama City.
I have a three-and-a-half-year-old son for him to come out and enjoy himself and go on the slide and the swing, so it's very nice.
The train-themed playground, complete with custom play structures that mimic a train depot and train cars, also offers play areas that are designed for children of varying abilities.
It's so beautiful. I, so many ways to the kids have fun. There is a train, there is a stop right there to go around on the park, to play with sand.
Officials recently celebrated the opening with a ribbon cutting. The new play area was made possible thanks to a collaboration between the Department of Wreck and Parks and community partners like Shane's Inspiration and First Five LA, organizations that are dedicated to supporting the needs of young children and their families.
Together, we can promote more physical activity with play spaces like this and help children maintain a healthy week.
Community members also gave their input in creating two unique playground designs, one train-themed tot park and the other a plane-themed playground. And the kids couldn't get enough, sliding down the slides and swinging back and forth, nothing like a day at a brand-new park to release some energy. The playground is the 30th play area to open in partnership with the city and Shane's Inspiration. Well, a dance group that'll get you tapping to the beat, exploring LA's undiscovered neighborhoods, and it's the Hard Knock Life at the Pantages Theater, here's this week's things to do. Since Rhapsody in Taps' beginnings in 1981, artistic director and choreographer Linda Sol-Ellison and Rhapsody in Taps artists have created a vast repertoire, celebrating the tap tradition and exploring new directions in tap choreography. Featuring three world premieres, Heart Song and Boot Brigade, two works exploring tap, body, and boot percussion, the Rhapsody in Taps presents its 34th annual Los Angeles season. Experience brilliant poetic tap and music improvisations, energetic ensemble dancing, infectious rhythms, and foot padding bounce-in-your-seats fun on Saturday, October 17, at the Eretani Theater at 244 South San Pedro Street in downtown LA. Visit rhapsodyintaps.com for more. On Saturday, October 17, and Sunday, October 18, the nonprofit LA Commons will host its fifth annual Found LA Festival of Undiscovered Neighborhoods. Following last year's tie to Mayor Eric Garcetti's Great Streets program, this year's theme is driven by the idea of mapping one's own Los Angeles. The Free Weekend of Tours is inspired by the new heyday release Latitudes: An Angelenos' Atlas, which brings 19 diverse local writers together with a cartographer to explore aspects of the city's geography, history, and culture. The essays range from quirky to provocative, but each is grounded by the physical, societal, and perceived boundaries and neighborhoods of LA. For neighborhood-specific tours, visit lacommons.org/programs. The world's best-loved musical returns in time-honored form and is perfect for the entire family. This Tony Award-winning production of Annie will be a brand-new incarnation of the iconic original. Annie includes such unforgettable songs as "It's the Hard Knock Life," "Easy Street," "I Don't Need Anything But You," plus the eternal anthem of optimism, "Tomorrow." It's been described as big, warm-hearted, and funny. Annie runs now through November 1 at the Pantages Theater located at 6233 Hollywood Boulevard in Los Angeles. For tickets, visit hollywoodpantages.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana K., and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Open wide.
Good morning, good morning. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. If I can get a little quiet. Perfect. It is Friday, October 16th. Again, welcome. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is, uh, welcome. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bluman, Phil Bonn, and Buscainos, Adio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Uh, Ms. Martinez moves and Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Englander moves and Buscainos seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that Item 1N be received and filed inasmuch as the lien has been paid in full, and that Items 1M and 1P be continued for two weeks to October 30th.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Do we have cards on the remaining items here?
Yes, Items 1 through 3 are Items Notice for Public Hearing, and there are cards on Items 1, 2, and 3.
Okay, so let's hold, uh, those items and let's move on to the next section.
Items 4 through 5 are Items for which public hearings have been held, and the committee report for Item 4 has been submitted and circulated for consideration.
Okay, specials, members. I want to hold for a moment Item 4. So let's vote on the remaining item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Let's move on.
Items 6 through 9 are Items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on 6, 7, 8, and 9.
Okay, then we will hold those, those items as well, and that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to Presentations, Items Called Special or Public Comment on Items Not on Council's Agenda.
Okay, is, uh, our appointee for Ethics, I don't see her right now, Ms. Murray? Okay, so then, why don't we go to Presentations? We're gonna go Mitch O'Farrell first and then Ms. Martinez. Mr. O'Farrell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I have standing with me this morning representatives from several organizations, uh, and we are honoring them today in Give to L.A. Day, Los Angeles. The organizations being recognized today are the Asian Pacific Community Fund, the Brotherhood Crusade, City of Hope, Community Health Charities, Earth Share California, Los Angeles Foundation on Aging, the L.A. Trust, United Latino Fund, the UNCF, United Way, and Variety, the Children's Charity. I am glad to be joined by General Manager Steven David Simon from the Department on Disability and this great group of ambassadors for the city of Los Angeles, Give to L.A. Combined Charitable Campaign. Please give them all a big round of applause. For over 20 years, the city has combined the efforts of many of the most respected and successful charitable agencies within the city of Los Angeles into a single-city employee fundraising endeavor with the primary goal of improving the quality of life for all people in all communities in this great city of ours. Give to L.A. was initially created by the City Council and is officially endorsed by the Mayor of Los Angeles. Each year, it is overseen by a Department of the City of Los Angeles. This year's campaign is chaired by the Department on Disability, Mr. Steven David Simon. The charitable agencies participating in the campaign are charitable federation and single-purpose organizations. The 2015 campaign will support various causes involving healthcare, the environment, education, and poverty through a workplace giving campaign where city employees can give to a diverse range of organizations that address a specific community in need of their choice. The campaign will be both open and collaborative, driven by donor choice, which will create a large-scale impact, uh, across the city, all vital areas that have a need for additional resources. And now I'd like to introduce our General Manager of the Department of Disability, Mr. Steven David Simon, for a few words.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
You bet.
Thank you. Good morning, councilmember, councilmembers. Um, I'm gonna be brief. Obviously, we're here, and I'm proud, on behalf of the Department on Disability, to be the lead, uh, the city department for the Give to L.A. campaign for 2015. We're here to thank these extraordinary organizations. They provide services in all 15 council districts. They, they just do such extraordinary work for people across all of our communities. But you know what? You're gonna hear from them in a minute. I have someone else to thank. I have to thank every single city employee that has contributed to this campaign. It's thousands of us, over two decades now. Last year, city employees doing their day job, right? Day and night, working so hard, dug into their pockets and raised more than $325,000 to support the extraordinary work of these agencies. So, we're gonna hear how great they are. We know how great these organizations are, but I just want to make sure we have that shout-out and recognize our extraordinary City of L.A. employees for supporting this work, again, across all of our communities. Thank you again.
Excuse me, and now representing the organizations, we have Yolanda Guerrero. She's the Director of Development for the City of Hope, to say a few words.
Welcome.
Good morning, President Wesson and councilmembers. It is a pleasure to be here. For over 21 years, City of Los Angeles Combined Charitable Campaign has pulled the efforts of many of the most respected and successful charitable, charitable agencies in Los Angeles into a single-city employee fundraising endeavor. Our goal is to improve the quality of life for all the people in the communities in this great city. I'd like to ask Stacy Hill-Williams to join me. She is the co-lead for this effort, and Stacy?
Good morning, President Wesson and esteemed councilmembers. It is our pleasure to be here this morning, and our sole goal is to thank you and the city employees of Los Angeles for your participation, ongoing support of our campaign. Our organizations raise funds for over 400-member charities that have a variety of programs that assist everyone from the newborn to the elderly. Our charities fund and provide vital, needed social services, healthcare programs, environmental programs, and scholarships. The services, the services we provide, your constituents live in your areas. Our offices are located in your areas, and all of the services that we provide remain in this city. Every year, city employees are offered the opportunity to contribute in making Los Angeles and the surrounding community, communities a better place for everyone. The Give to L.A. Combined Charitable Campaign provides a convenient and efficient opportunity for city employees to give through payroll deduction or one-time donations. And at this time, we would like to present the City Council with this check where the city has raised $327,518.50. This is amazing, and we want to thank you because we can continue our outreach and services to the citizens of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. Thank you. If you like, I could hold that check.
Don't you all think that we can do better than this next time around? I think we can. I wanna, I wanna plug this organization for all city employees and all of my colleagues. Let's sign up and, you know, let's, let's up the ante here for all these great organizations. All right, so, again, colleagues, please give a big round of applause to the organizations aforementioned for their wonderful work, and a big, hearty congratulations on this wonderful day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you all. Uh, members, we can go to Item 4. And it's, uh, the public comment has already been satisfied on this item. So on Item 4, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is approved. We'll now defer to Ms. Nuri Martinez. The floor is yours.
We just need a quick second for all of our honorees to stand behind their respective councilmember.
Go right ahead.
You guys don't have to speak, but, you don't have to speak, you don't have to speak. You just stand here and smile because I'm...
Well, I have my honoree.
Okay.
With me, Ms. Martinez.
That's a great, that's a great spot to be.
I want you to know I follow instructions, so she is here.
Thank you. Are we ready?
Yeah. So, she's, she's gonna stand with me.
Thank you very much, and good morning, colleagues. Today, I'm happy to stand here and celebrate the great work of some amazing ladies in our city. We need strong women and Latina leaders to be role models for the next generation of women. This is why we began to recognize local women leaders at our annual Latina Breakfast in honor of Latino Heritage Month. If we want women leaders, we need to be able to inspire them. It is important that we take time to pay tribute to the great work of the women that carry our city day in and day out. Oftentimes, the women who are doing the work don't get recognized or praised for their accomplishments. Over the past three breakfast receptions, we have recognized a wide range of Latinas from across our city, from our neighborhood activists to our business owner to our local artists. And today, I'm focusing on the strength of women. The women in our culture are strong and really powerful. However, we don't, we don't usually see them being recognized for their accomplishments in the athletic world. This is, this year, I joined the L.A. Sparks on their We Are Women campaign to honor and celebrate women who live, work as pioneers, leaders, activists, and role models within our community. In addition, I have also joined the LAFD in their efforts to boost recruitment of women into the fire service as they're preparing to partner with our local schools to start recruiting athletes. It was through both of these activities that I was inspired to focus this year's theme of our breakfast on highlighting and recognizing Latinas who are excelling in the sports world. So through these events and programs, I realized that while there may, it might appear that there aren't many women in these fields, we need to do a better job of promoting the women and girls that are. According to a recent study, more than 400 female executives in five countries, of the top executives, over half of them played a sport in college or a university level, and only 3% of them did not participate in any sport throughout their lives. Many of the women said that sports teaches leadership skills and can't, that can't be taught in the classroom. In the Latino community, we often find that there are cultural barriers to getting girls involved in sports. We need to communicate the benefits of having our daughters participate in sports. We need to highlight the role that team sports can play in helping our daughters acquire their personal characteristics that will help them achieve their mother's dreams. And many of our immigrants in our culture often limit girls to be adventurous and are often taught to stay at home. I believe that if parents know the benefits of enrolling their daughters in sports, they would take advantage of whatever opportunity comes their way. And the more we encourage and support our daughters and sisters to participate in sports, the more likely we will see more athletes competing on a professional level. We can see the next Olympian or the next WNBA or MMA champion coming out, coming out of our very neighborhoods. So today, we celebrate the women and girls who are able to participate and recognize them for being shining examples of leadership and athleticism. The ladies here today are breaking barriers in non-traditional fields such as boxing, wrestling. Women and girls are excelling in their sports to earn themselves scholarships to attend college, as well as women who are mentoring and coaching other girls in their neighborhoods. I'm excited to stand here and recognize an amazing group of girls who are helping shape their communities through sports. It is my hope that their leadership and their accomplishments in sports will translate to leadership and excellence in their adult lives and exemplify itself in the community. I want to begin by mentioning who we're honoring today, and I will allow you to introduce your honorees in just a moment. In Council District 1, it's Naomi Rodriguez, who's the Senior Director of External Affairs and Community Relations at the L.A. Dodgers. We also have Vanessa Aguilar, who's a youth basketball coach at the Valley Plaza Rec Center. Arquidia Labrador, our Marshall High School softball coach, where she once played softball herself. Marilyn Garcia and Alexandra Castillo and Vanessa Alvarez. These are, these are the women's wrestling champions from Birmingham High School in Lake Barboa. Casey Bernal was last year's Athlete of the Year at Los Angeles Mission College, where she currently plays softball. Perla Bazuldua, a 10-year-old boxer who is a member of an LAPD Newton Division Pal Boxing Team. Samantha Bricio is senior captain of the, of the women, of the Women of Troy USC Volleyball Team. Ivana Castro is senior at Loyola Marymount University, where she plays water polo, and she has led their team in back-to-back conference championships. Josie Raya from the North Valley Family YMCA. Guadalupe Salas, who plays both volleyball and softball while maintaining a 3.6 GPA at Helen Bernstein High School. Angelica Jali Felix, who made the Pac-12 freshman softball team and teaches softball drills to girls at El Sereno on her offseason. Natalie Rivas, a senior at Port of Los Angeles High School, who has maintained a 4.46 GPA while participating in cross-country. And Daisy Garcia, another senior at Port of Los Angeles High School, who has a 4.09 GPA and is currently playing for the varsity soccer team. And both of these two ladies are members of the Honor Society. So colleagues, thank you so much for supporting our annual event and for picking such an amazing group of ladies that we can highlight through their activities and sports, and together we can build the pipeline for Latina leaders in our city. I will now give you an opportunity to introduce your honoree, and I can start to my right. Mr. Fuentes?
My honoree could not be here today. Ms. Martinez, she's taken a very important test, but my honoree is Cassie Bernal. She's a softball player at Los Angeles Mission College.
Thank you very much. I know it's midterms. There's another honoree that couldn't be here that is attending UCLA. Mr. Englander.
Yes, uh, thank you very much, and thank you for doing this. This is, this is great. Today, I'm so honored, um, to have our CD-12 honoree, Josie Raya, here. Josie, yes, come on. Josie is the Associate Executive Director of the North Valley Family YMCA, and she's responsible for working with the Parent and Child Program, which is known as Adventure Guides and the Summer Resident Camp Program, which includes campouts at Camp Fox and Camp Widow, Camp Round Meadow, Sierra, Catalina Island, the annual canoe trips, and in fact, right after this presentation, she's gonna go pack, grab a group of families, and head over to Camp Fox, including my Chief of Staff, John Lee, who's headed over there today, so I want to make sure you bring back some photos. Josie's been with the North Valley Family YMCA since 1990, and, and rather than go through her bio, I actually just want to share something personal. Josie saved my life. She actually created an opportunity for me and my children that I would have never, ever had, and, and I got a picture of our annual canoe trips. Not only does she work with the Family Child Program, not only does she dedicate her entire life to, her sport is making memories for families and children and at-risk youth. She runs the camp for the pals in Casa Escondida, kids that would never be able to afford to go to camp. She works with families, and for me, and what's that, that's meant to me is, is I grew up without having the ability to go to, to camp, without, um, a dad, and without having that opportunity, because my mom worked three jobs, to spend any type of quality time like that. Uh, and I knew, as busy as I was, and as I currently am, as we all are, out of our lives, to take my daughters away for a weekend, to go canoeing down the Colorado River, as we did for years with Josie, um, to go to Camp Widow and Camp Fox. We look back now on our family albums, and every year that my kids grew up, and I asked them, "What are the best memories of your life?", and they're like, camping out with you, Dad, our family trips with Josie. And you go through my family album, and every other page, there's a picture of Josie and Terry, who's here as well, and the YMCA, and it was Josie that created the memories that will last a lifetime for me. She, she's done that for thousands and thousands, unbelievable, literally, thousands of, of families and children, and kids that never would have that opportunity. She's a hero, and I love you, Josie. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Josie. Congratulations. That councilmember, Adio, is not here today, but his honoree is Naomi Rodriguez, uh, who's with the L.A. Dodgers. So congratulations to her. Mr. Buscainos?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. That's a great story, Mitch. Thanks for sharing that. Congratulations, and I really appreciate you. Uh, colleagues, we have here two student athletes from the Port of Los Angeles High School, both champions on and off the field. Natalie Vivas and Daisy Garcia. Both Natalie and Daisy are seniors at Pola High School, home of the Bears, Pola Bears, Go Bears. Uh, both are outstanding athletes and scholars, a shining example of what it means to be a student athlete. Both are AP Scholars, members of the National Honor Society, California Scholastic Federation, and plan to attend universities, um, university, college after graduating from Pola High School. And I think they're gearing up, once they hear their story, they're gearing up for the 2024 Olympics that we're gonna host here in L.A. And Natalie's part of the varsity cross-country team, where in her sophomore year holds a 4.46 GPA, and, yes, and completed the L.A. Biomed Internship just this last summer. Uh, she also participated in the Normandy Academy with the National World War II Museum, and as part of this program, Natalie researched the impacts, uh, that D-Day had in the United States and France. She also researched casualties as part of the Omaha Invasion. Uh, Natalie is on her way to be named, uh, this year's valedictorian at Pola High School. Daisy has been a starting player on the girls' varsity, uh, girls' soccer team since her freshman year. Outside of school, she plays club soccer with the L.A. Galaxy South Bay. She holds a 4.09 GPA last summer, uh, just this last summer, completed an internship with a Boeing company. She coordinates a blood drive at her school and is heavily involved in the community. And these are champions both on and off the field, and I want to also recognize their school leader, their principal, Mr. Tom Scotty, who has joined us here, um, and also one of their board members, Commissioner Eric Eisenberg, who is here, um, as part of this morning's festivities. So let's give them a round of applause. We love you, we want the best for you, and we congratulate you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, lady. Mr. Bonn?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for doing this. I am very proud today to be joined by Ivana Castro, who is a senior water polo superstar at Loyola Marymount University in my district, and she's an all-around exceptional student athlete. Uh, she is a Chicano Studies major, is a product, is a product of the Commerce Water Polo Club and is part of the U.S. National Development Program for the past seven years. She led the Lions, the Loyola Lions, to back-to-back conference championships in 2014 and 2015. She's recognized as one of the top water polo players in the West, and she's coming off a stellar year. She tells me she hopes to go pro and play in Barcelona next year. Uh, she is a two-time first-team All-Gold, All-Golden Coast Conference selection. She was the all-around stats leader for the Lions with 57 goals, 32 assists, and 41 steals. Despite changing conferences recently, Ivana has helped the program at LMU to not miss a beat. The Lions finished 22 and 11 in 2015, the 15th straight season with 20 or more wins. They advanced to the GCC title game for the 16th straight season and won the title with a 6-3 win over the... a 6-3 win over the higher-seeded host, 15th-ranked Pacific. She's more than a student, though. She also gives back to her community. She volunteers at Williams Elementary School and also to help out the Downey Dolphins and the Commerce Swim Meats. I am really proud to have her with us here today, and I want to thank you, Ms. Martinez, for making this opportunity available to all the awardees today.
That's amazing. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I should note, she's joined here today by her boyfriend, Ever Resendez, who's trying desperately to take a good photo from a distance.
Where's your hand, boyfriend? Did you? Okay. Mr. President?
Need a wide shot. There, come on. It is my, first of all, Ms. Martinez, I cannot thank you enough for doing this. This is very, very important.
Thank you.
For some of us here, we grew up in an era where sports, women didn't play sports. I mean, and it wasn't promoted. It took a group of strong-minded women and open-minded progressive men to recognize the importance of team and ensuring with things like Title IX that our young ladies were afforded the opportunity to play any sport that they wanted to play. And I can't think of anything that is better to train an individual about life than sports. I am honored to have with me today Samantha Bricio. Samantha was born in Jalisco, Mexico, and she became a volleyball phenomenon. She attracted the attention of several universities in the United States of America, and she chose USC in L.A. over 12 other schools. So let's give Samantha and USC a round of applause. I just have a couple of notes here, just, I want to give you a flavor of how phenomenal she is as a player. Volleyball Magazine's NCAA Freshman of the Year, the American Volleyball Coaches Association All-Stars, Pac-12 All-Conference Team, All-Pacific Region Team, Pan-American Cup Best Scorer, and I, oh wait, and ESPN Player of the Week. She is the captain of the USC Women of Troy Volleyball Team. They are 18-0 and have a game this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure for me to present the great striker, scorer Samantha Bricio.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. It is my pleasure to introduce my Latinas in Sports honoree today, Orchidia, or Orki Labrador. Orki has chosen to devote her time to the education and development of female athletes at Marshall High School in Las Villas. She is also, she is celebrating this year, her 20th year of coaching softball at Marshall, and she's joined by Wendy Triplet, the Athletic Director, and Robin Lee Ramirez, retired AP of Athletics, in the audience. She is a testament to the impact that sports and mentorship can have on current and future athletes and our next generation of leaders. Without great coaches, we can't have great players. I'm incredibly proud to have Orki here with us today as we wind down Latino Heritage Month and grateful for the role that she's been able to play in the lives of so many young women. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. And to introduce the youngest honoree, Mr. Curran Price.
Thank you, Madam President, and I too just wanted to join my colleagues in thanking you for your leadership on this issue and for convening this exciting opportunity for us to celebrate not only Latinas, but individuals who are committed to our community. But we are excited to recognize our Latinas in sports, and I'm proud to present to you Ms. Perla Bazuldua. She's a championship boxer. Let's give it up for the championship boxer. She's part of the Newton PAL Boxing Program, and just this June, she competed in the U.S. Junior Championships in West Virginia. Guess what? She took the first-place female PWE Championship position, winning the 65-weight division. 65-weight. Let's give it up for the champ. But she doesn't just have a strong punch. In addition to her many boxing accolades, she was an honor student with a 4.4 GPA. She won a recent school spelling bee contest, a cheerleading award, and she's a member of the track team. And so she is really a Renaissance sports champion, and today she realizes that there's nothing she can't do, and she certainly has that encouragement from family and friends. Officer Triana and Sergeant Garcia are here from Newton, supporting the cause. Coach Clark is here, along with her parents, Crispin and Glindy. We salute our boxing champion. She is a role model for us all.
Congratulations, Perla. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. My honoree today is Guadalupe Salas. She comes to us from Hollywood, where she is a senior at Helen Bernstein High School, and she has expertise in the sports of volleyball and softball, where she really loves being up to back. And I think the Dodgers could have used Guadalupe Salas last night. She is also a leader in her school, mentoring other young ladies into a productive way of life, and she is preparing for college next year. I think the future is very bright for Guadalupe Salas, and I think that we're all going to be in great shape because of the work and the person that she is, along with the other fine young women being honored today. So thank you so much for this occasion.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Farrell. And I want to quickly introduce Mr. Krikorian's honoree. He couldn't be here, he had a prior commitment, but her name is Vanessa Aguilar, who's standing right behind me. She's a North Hollywood resident who earned a full Division I Basketball Championship, I'm sorry, Scholarship, and graduated from UC Irvine in 2014, now playing for El Salvador National Team, just returned from the Central American Tournament. She also played multiple sports while attending Grant High Schools. She played softball, she was on the swim team, the track team, and the basketball team. One of five children born to her immigrant parents, she's the first one to earn a college degree, and she's currently a behavior therapist and volunteers at Valley Plaza Rec Center coaching youth basketball. Congratulations to you. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, and thank you so much for doing this and for the continued attention you can play on assuring us and showing us that women are doing great things out there. So thank you for your work on this and your continued support. And I'm very excited to present someone who is from Council District 14, and not only because she is a Bruin like myself, but because she's a great role model and fantastic example of what you can achieve with hard work and determination. And speaking of Angelica Jali Felix, who is a junior at UCLA, where she plays on the Division I Softball Team after joining the team as a walk-on as a freshman. Angelica was here this morning. However, as Ms. Martinez mentioned, she had to leave for midterms at school, but we have with us today her mother, Frances Felix, and she's accepting the recognition on her behalf. Jali went from a walk-on to All-Pac-12 Honorable Mention at a program that has earned 11 national titles, and it's always been her dream, as well as her family's, to play softball at UCLA. And Jali is living proof that dreams do come true. And while some might have doubted whether this Lincoln High School graduate could achieve this dream, she inherited some great genes from her parents, so I think it was inevitable. Frances played softball at Wilson High School, and her father, Art Felix, played baseball at Franklin High School, so Jali was a natural. They certainly taught her well. Jali shows us that being a great model is not only about accomplishing your own dreams, but her and her father continue to provide lessons at the local parks. They've come back to their community, never forgotten where they come from, and are showing the young people what they can achieve and also building up their skills. We are so, so proud of Jali. We're proud that she's from El Sereno. We're proud that she went to a great school like UCLA, right, Mr. Fuentes? And go Bruins! And so we're very excited to name her the Council District 14 2015 Latina Athlete of the Year in Sports. Congratulations.
Congratulations. And all of our best to Jali.
Ms. Martinez, if I could add as well, her mom mentioned to me right now that, as you know, the great Jackie Robinson's number, number 42, was retired at UCLA. However, Jali will be the last female athlete to wear the number 42 in any sport, so congratulations to Jali for that as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And to conclude our presentation, I want to recognize my honorees, Marilyn Garcia, Alexandra Castillo, and Vanessa Alvarez, who are the Women's Wrestling Champions at Birmingham High School in Lake Barboa. Congratulations to them three. Thank you very much for being here. Mr. President, that concludes our presentation, and we'll be taking pictures in the media room. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Now, thank you. This is very important. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you again so much. Mr. Bonin, for a quick intro, it's my understanding?
Thank you very much. Yes, colleagues, I'd like, on behalf of Mr. Blumenfield, who's not here today, to welcome the 2015-2016 City Human Relations Commission Youth Ambassadors to Council Chambers. Could you stand up? This is a group of students who work with the Human Relations Commission on this program, and upon completion of their one-year commitment, they're going to earn a one-week, all-inclusive trip to DC, where they'll have the opportunity to utilize their new skill sets to represent the city of L.A.'s youth. They'll talk with congressional leaders, meet with White House officials, and tour some of the national monuments. They've asked me to read the names of the folks who are here today. Adam Brown and Elaine Botello from Granada Hills Charter School, Alexandra Sarafin from Narbonne Magnet High School, Avery Suk from La Canada High School, Jorge Grijalva from the Port of Los Angeles High School, Manary Roman from Roosevelt Magnet School, Merah Witmezun and Mesoret Mezun from Culver City High School, my apologies if I mispronounced that, Paradise Oakley from Landale High School, Rachel Pikelney from New West Charter High School in District 11, Tatanya Ali from Venice High in District 11, Rachel Song and Kitty Liu from Notre Dame Academy, Dupries Montgomery and Jupriz Montgomery from Jefferson High School, Ernesto Sarabia from Jefferson High School, and Justin Rogers from Los Angeles High School. Thank you very much. Welcome.
I'd like to defer to Mr. Fuentes for a presentation at this time.
Good morning, colleagues. You know, as elected members, we get the opportunity to work with a lot of different people in our own council districts and throughout the city of Los Angeles, and I think some of the most rewarding work that happens in Los Angeles is when we work with youth. We saw it just a second ago about all of the great students, scholars, that are doing tremendous things by their own right. And along that vein, I wanted to bring into you today a program that is operating in my district that is doing phenomenal, phenomenal work. And part of the interface that we get a chance in this city to do is to work across municipal, across jurisdictional boundaries. And today, I wanted to introduce to you all, for your warm welcome and support and thank you, the Los Angeles School Police Department Youth Wrestling Team. Give them a big round of applause. This youth wrestling team was developed in 2011 by L.A. School Police Department officers and partners in the northeast San Fernando Valley with the intent of keeping our kids occupied and busy and off of the streets. You know, we talk an awful lot these days about children and youth and making sure that we're doing everything to keep them off the streets, and I think that could be said for every corner of the city of Los Angeles. We need to keep our young minds exercised, our young bodies busy, and we have to make sure that we do that across the city of Los Angeles. But these folks here with me today in particular are doing it in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Since its inception, this youth wrestling team has won four consecutive California State Championships in various youth divisions. The program currently works out of San Fernando High School, my alma mater, and they have about 120 kids participating. The coaches are the officers and the parents of this organization, and they are not paid one dime, folks. And when these young people come, if they don't have the means to be able to participate, these officers, these volunteers, they figure out how to make it happen. And I'm very grateful for them for what it is that they're doing, not just to make sure that we keep our streets safe, but to make sure that our young minds and bodies out there, the future of Los Angeles, work in a way that is productive and is going to help us all make for a better community. With me today, I've got Coach John Baez to say a few words, and also one of the young wrestlers, very fitting for today, Patricia Aranya. So we'll go ahead and bring up the coach first. Coach?
Welcome, Coach. Welcome, Council. I just want to say some words to the young lady that gave honor to the women. We got to go back to what James Brown said. "It's a man's world, but you can't do nothing, nothing, without a woman and a girl." So those are words of wisdom from James Brown. But I do want to say thank you for giving us an opportunity to share what we have going here. Mr. Fuentes, I have to thank you because I shed bloods and tears in the same field that you did, and there's a tradition in our school, in our neighborhood, that we continue, and I want to thank the Chief of Police for helping us continue this tradition that we have. In history of life, if there isn't no traditions, well, there's nothing for our kids to continue to hold on to. We establish principles, character, values, morals for all these children, not just teach them how to defend themselves, but to help them live a sound life. And being, working with the Chief of Police, we're teaching our children also not to fear the police officers, but to work together, because they're to protect and serve, and we need to teach our kids to not to fear, but to work together and establish a better community.
Coach, hold one second. Chief, get up here. I see you trying to hide in the back. He's a good man, and let's bring him down here. And Coach, the floor, Coach, the floor is yours. You can continue. I just want to make sure the chief is seen.
Well, you know, one thing it says is our lives begin to end the day that we become silent to the things that matter. And what matters in our lives is to help our kids continue. And that quotation came from Martin Luther King, that he said, "If we stay silent to things that are important, we would end it all." But again, I know that our Chief of Police has taken heed to what we have and what we want to establish there, and with their support, and with your support, and with your support, there's a new dog in the fight for us to win these victories that we need to win in the streets, because the overpopulated prisons are not working. We need to populate more our colleges other than our prisons, so by us working together, we could achieve these goals. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chief, I can, Mr. Fuentes, I can see why the coach is so good, because he makes me want to go run through something right now. I mean, so you're that kind of coach. Thank you for what you do, sir.
The coach, as you can tell, phenomenal, real inspirational, also a proud alum of San Fernando High School. But we also, as I mentioned, the partnership was with the Los Angeles Unified School District's Police Department, and today we're joined by Steve Zipperman, our chief. Come on up, chief.
Come on, chief. It's so good to see you, sir.
Good morning, Council President and Councilman Fuentes. I just want to say, on behalf of the L.A. Unified School District Board of Education and Superintendent Ramon Cortinas, all of you have seen some extraordinary young men and women today within not only L.A. Unified School District, but some other schools as well. And I don't think the coach could have said any better. This is how we will continue to keep our young people active, out of trouble, and ensure that not only do they stay out of trouble, but they graduate and move on to careers in college. But one thing that I think is- and move on to careers in college. But one thing that I think is not mentioned today yet was that all of the folks that are helping these young people, the officers, the coaches, everybody else, they're doing it on their own time. They're doing it after-school hours. The officers were not getting paid. They did it on their own time to ensure these young people had an avenue to utilize in the sport in which they chose to thrive in. I want to congratulate all of you for a job well done on the wrestling championships. But more importantly, I want to stress the importance of all of us to continue to engage our young people and to keep them active and to ensure we continue to work alongside the community and other groups outside the school district that can also help our young people today to thrive and continue to provide them with the proper opportunity to graduate and move on to careers in college. So again, on behalf of LA Unified, thank you for your continued support. Sergeant Arana, thank you for all the hours you've put in and all of our officers to continue to help us with our young people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm 12.
All right, tell them.
Hello, my name is Patricia Arana, and I'm 12. I've been wrestling for the Los Angeles School Police Department for over five years. I'm a multiple state champion and have been wrestling... Oh, man.
How many years have you been wrestling?
I've been wrestling for over five years, and I'm one of the top national girls in California.
Good for you.
Give her a big round of applause.
Good for you. Give her a great round of applause. Thank you.
Good job. You can see, colleagues, why this is such a special program. And it's cross-jurisdictional, too. You heard a lot about Los Angeles Unified School Police, but my very own senior lead officer, Alonso Menchaca, is also here in support LAPD. Again, let me just underscore the point here. These are volunteers giving of their time to make sure that this city's future is bright, and you can clearly see it's also tough. Thank you very much. Give them a big round of applause. Coaches, we've got this certificate here that we'd like to present on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, thanking you for all of your efforts, your volunteerism, and the tremendous product that we're creating here. Strong, tough minds and bodies. Big round of applause.
Yeah. Mr. Fuentes, this was a, this was a good one. This was a good one. Again, congratulations, Coach. Chief, good to see you. Mr. O'Farrell? The floor is yours, sir.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I am very pleased to be standing in for our colleague Paul Coretts this morning, who was not able to be here. And I'm honored to help lead this presentation celebrating Conflict Resolution Day. First, I'd like to introduce our special guests. We're joined here today by Maria Simpson, who is the president of the Southern California Mediation Association Education Foundation, Sally Patchen, Wendy Forster, and Julie Ware, who are also board members of the foundation, and Michelle Mike Sell, a member of the Board of California Mediators Association. I thank each of you for what you do year-round and for joining us on this important occasion. This special day, Conflict Resolution Day, was begun back in 2005, so this is our 10-year anniversary, in order to help raise awareness about productive and peaceful ways for dealing with conflict. It is no secret that conflicts, large and small, cause grievous damage to individuals, families, communities, cities, and nations, and can weigh on people for days, months, and years, and, as we all know, escalate into something much larger than a simple conflict. I'm sure we all recognize how urgent, how essential, conflict resolution can be for people to discover means for working out their issues and finding greater harmony with each other and in their lives. That's why, on this crucial day, we promote conciliation and the use of mediation and other effective ways of bringing people together to resolve difficulties. When we can resolve conflicts peacefully, affordably, and expeditiously, we reduce violence and help avoid or lessen burdensome financial costs and all the toll that comes with bitter disagreements. The goal of this day has been to energize and enlighten individuals, families, schools, communities, the legal system, and government itself in raising awareness about conflict resolution and its tools. In truth, Conflict Resolution Day was actually yesterday, October 15th, but we weren't meeting. So I guess we could say in jest that today is scheduling Conflict Resolution Day, because it's never too late to schedule a conflict resolution. But of course, we want every day to be the Conflict Resolution Day, in which we improve and enhance our skills at solving conflicts sensibly and amicably. But enough about the Los Angeles City Council. And so, once again, I am delighted to thank our guests for being here, because they and the organizations they represent are champions of conflict resolution. On their behalf, speaking will be Maria Simpson, President of the Southern California Mediation Association Education. Ms. Simpson, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Good morning. I really appreciate your proclamation and your support for Conflict Resolution Day. The Education Foundation is the charitable and educational arm of the Southern California Mediation Association. And as such, we support the public efforts in conflict resolution. It's a happy accident that we're here today on a day when so many student athletes have been recognized, because one of the projects that we support are all of the peer mediators in our elementary, middle, and high schools that solve the problems that occur on their campuses. They are wonderful. I think if you ever had a chance to meet them, you would be blown away with their sophistication, their dedication, and their expertise. They are student athletes. They're scholars. They're musicians. And they are also the kids down the hall who just want to help people stop fighting. And they do in the most wonderful ways. They are our children. They're your children. That's one group that the Education Foundation supports. And the material that I handed out is an example of the services that we provide for all of the peaceful communities in Los Angeles. It's a collection of materials that we made to be a resource center for information on peer mediation in particular. There are lesson plans there. There are links to other sites, other sources of information that all relate to peer mediation and Conflict Resolution Day. And they all come from either the national organization, or they come from local Los Angeles organizations that have participated and contributed to that document. So there's something in there for absolutely everybody. We are very, very pleased to have been here today. We hope that in the future, the council will find a way to recognize the peer mediators in their schools. They don't get nearly the attention that students like the athletes get, and the schools don't get the support they need to implement these programs in all of our schools. So thank you very much for your recognition of Conflict Resolution Day, and we hope it will be an annual recognition. Thank you.
Now, thank you for all you do. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, Mr. O'Farrell, I do want to call on Mr. Buscayino.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for bringing in the individuals who really have had an impact in our communities as it relates to calling for peace in our neighborhoods. As a senior lead officer for many, many years, I had an opportunity to use conflict resolution as a tool and bring in mediators. It's funny how, unfortunately, you have a lot of neighbors disputing. And I've often said, as a senior lead officer, you see your neighbors more than you see your family, and it's important to get along. And whether it's a barking dog or other disputes that neighbors have day in and day out, this conflict resolution program that was very useful in my days as a senior lead officer, I just want to rise and congratulate you and thank you for being our peacekeepers in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Again, thank you. Mr. O'Farrell, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So it is my privilege to present this certificate of recognition on Conflict Resolution Day, one day removed, but nonetheless, the 10-year anniversary of Conflict Resolution Day to these wonderful advocates who are quietly working for peaceful resolutions across our great city. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Again, thank you so very much. I'm going to ask Mr. Walsh to come forward. Madam Clerk, we're going to move to item six. John Walsh on item six.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. J. Walsh Confidential. Item six, again, it's REAP. You're doing a good job on REAP. If you have anything in your apartment that landlord is late in fixing, just go to the city. A building inspector will show up. I had a very, very courteous and very smart building inspector. He listed the things that were not up to code, and they got fixed. So my landlord didn't get on REAP. But if your landlord gets on REAP, he doesn't get your rent anymore. And if he doesn't get your rent anymore, or she doesn't get your rent anymore, I can tell you right away, it's going to be repaired. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let on item six, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, that's approved. We'll move on to item seven. Ms. Ramirez. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Previn, Mr. Spindler, and Mr. Marine. Ms. Ramirez, I believe, passed. So that brings us to Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number seven concerns the communication from CAO officer on, from September 21st, concerning resolution relative to the personnel authority. And this is a temporary authority. I'm not going to give you the gobbledygook. But what this does, again, is allow them to hire unqualified people. Now, in places like New York or Chicago, they do this by the thousands. Here, they do it by 50, 60, 80, 100 a year. So we are not as corrupt as the other cities, but we're getting there because more and more, we're getting unqualified people getting the, being appointed to positions. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Previn?
Good morning, Council President. Wes, and it is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And this, this item is very interesting, sir. This is the staffing up, the aggressive rollout of new positions. Now, what's missing is the filled versus unfilled category or line. We'll get that some other time. But I would delay this until Krikorian is here because, number one, this is robustico, sir. This is an enormous rollout. We have embedded in this particular document, first of all, it was hard to get a copy, thanks to the clerk, who was able to make it available online. There is one clerk being added. They deserve a robust rollout themselves. We've, we've cut them back to next to nothing, sir. In the meantime, what we've done is we've, we've upgraded by an enormous amount of positions, groups like Building and Safety, more than 100 positions to my immediate glance. It's astonishing. Bureau of Engineering, 60 additional positions, sir. I mean, this is going to cost a fortune. I guess this has been approved by Krikorian during the earlier budget meeting, but my God. The city attorney himself, sir, deserves a little respect here. They are adding, in addition to a number of deputy city attorneys ranked three, that's a higher-paid guy, it's over 60 new city attorneys, sir. So that means someone must have done a calculation about how many city attorney hours versus outside council. It is an astonishing rollout, sir. The fire battalion chiefs are a well-represented group down at City Hall, sir. There are multiple fire department battalion chiefs. And I know we've been promising, Mr. Englander has been making some aggressive promises in his way, and Krikorian certainly is guilty as accused there, sir. He loves the fire department. We all do. But this is really, and city planning. Let me, where's Weezer? There he is, nice basket of fruit, sir. Weezer has added so many people to planning that it is dizzying, sir. A regular resident was spinning around in circles trying to tally up the number of planning positions that have been added. And please, somebody step forward and correct me if I'm wrong. It is really, it is amazing. Now, only two people from Neighborhood Empowerment, so the plan to augment and divide, bifurcate Neighborhood Empowerment is going to have to be put on hold temporarily. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Marine, I don't see Mr. Spindler, but Mr. Marine, please come forward.
Yes. As you know, when a worker is employed more than they were anticipated to be employed in the first place, and that time period remains over six months, then that person has to be brought into participation with public employee benefit plans. So I'm all for this, because you have to make back payments for these people should you let their span of employment remain over 1,000 hours in the course of a year. So this is fine. But don't forget to make the back payments. What you saved in the first place, you got to pay in the second place. And what you're holding in the first place, and you didn't pay in the second place, it's called a back payment. So we can continue back payments forever. Just keep extending all the positions on a temporary status for as long as you like. But back payments are going to have to be made to public employee benefit plans and to 401, I mean, 457B plans if you choose to take some money from those employees. So go ahead. I'm all for it. Extend the positions as long as you like. Thank you.
Okay, I do not see Mr. Spindler. Let us prepare to vote on this items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, let's move on. Item eight, called by cards. So that would be, Mr. Previn, please come forward. Mr. Previn, we are on item eight.
Sir, it is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And I could try to sneak in a comment on something else, but this one is of limited interest to me. Do, will you permit me to wedge in a comment on the appointment of the Ethics Commission?
No, you can, you speak to this item. All right. Let's, oh, Mr. Spindler, is he here? Okay, I don't see him. Let's, on this item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. We move, we move now to item nine. Mr. Walsh, please come forward. Item nine, Mr. Walsh. Item nine, Mr. Walsh, please come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We need a serious discussion here, we're not going to get it today, on median islands. They're supposed to be politically correct. There are almost no median islands. What median islands do is slow down traffic and provide a very nice place for transients to sleep in Hollywood. These median islands will be in Council District Seven. They'll be full of street furniture. That is to make it more comfortable for criminals to engage in criminality in our neighborhoods. This issue, this was, this is District- Uh, this issue, uh, this was, this is District 7. This is Mr. Fuentes District. Uh, maybe he could have the, uh, use the median, uh, island for his commu- community council, they're looking for someplace.
No, you're off, if you, hold this time, you're off-topic. Please speak to the agenda item. If you, if you do that again, I'll cut you off and ask you to sit down. So get on the item, go ahead.
The median islands are a nuisance. But the median islands provide contracts for you to let out to your friends. I've never heard any, the answer on median islands is to slow the traffic down so you don't need to get stuck in the middle of traffic in a median island.
Okay, uh, Mr. Spindler, I still don't see him on this item. Let us prepare to vote on the item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, I'm gonna move now to item two. Mr. Walsh, item two. Mr. Spindler, item two. Please come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Jay Walsh Confidential. Again, this is, this concerns public convenience, we're all for convenience, and necessity. It is absolutely necessary that we add another license for the sale of alcoholic beverages. And this one will be on West Beverly Boulevard, East 22nd Street. We, sometimes you have to walk 10, 15, even 50 feet in that neighborhood before you can buy alcohol. And I just wanna say, and I want Mr. Rue, who said he was gonna vote against this, to say, if you vote for this, you are creating what we have here in LA, which is the drunk-driving capital of the world. And that's why we have so many licenses, a license to kill.
Okay, Mr. Spindler. I do not see Mr. Sp- Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Rue, this is not your district. This is my district. I think Mr. Walsh is possibly a little bit intoxicated talking on this item. He may, maybe he should figure on, uh, paid more attention to the agenda item. Um, this is an exciting, um, item before us, colleagues. In a time where we're trying to redevelop the LA waterfront, we had a, um, Crafted at the Port of Los Angeles is bringing in, uh, one of the newest, greenest breweries in the city of Los Angeles. In a time where, uh, we're trying to bring tourism and, and, and visitors to our district, we're really proud of the fact that Brewery West will be online here within the next couple months. Uh, I do wanna thank, uh, the city, the Port of Los Angeles Planning, and the, um, Wayne Blank, who owner-operator of Crafted at the Port of Los Angeles. Really excited about this project. I ask for an aye vote as we move forward on, um, reimagining, redeveloping the LA waterfront. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item three. Ms. Ramirez. Walsh. And how much time, Mr. Walsh, you have? Okay, uh, so Ms. Ramirez and Walsh.
I first say no. No to the guests who are registered at the Ritz-Milner Hotel. Because the guests need to have their full mental capacities when they re-enter their hotel rooms. Because as we all know, hotel rooms get illegally entered by wetbacks and gangbangers and cheap labor who are staffed at the hotels illegally and unlawfully.
Hold her time, you're off the topic.
Okay.
Please speak, hear me. Please speak to the agenda topic.
Well, I think that is crucial.
If, if you do not, I will cut you off and ask you to sit down. Okay, you can start her time, continue.
Having said that, um, I say to the Ritz-Milner Hotel, yes, for those wonderful hotel, uh, visitors. And no to the hotel guests. I think that is more than sufficient. So it's yes and no, depending on their status. If you're the guest, no. And if you're a visitor outside of the guest, yes. Entering your room is crucial. You need to know what is in your room, if it's already in there or robbed. So, again, having said that, I think that's very wonderful. And I understand that Donald Trump will make the hotel industry very-
Okay, you're off the topic. I'm gonna ask you to sit down. Okay, Mr. Walsh, item, uh, three.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Yeah, well, I'm not gonna even mention the name of the hotel already. Um, I've never heard of it. Uh, but 813 South Flower Street? Now, if you go to eight, uh, why is this a public convenience? Because if you don't give these people a liquor license at 813 South Flower Street, the alcoholics and the drunks are gonna have to walk all the way to 814 South Flower Street or 812 South Flower Street. We have the most, we have more liquor licenses per square mile than any city in America. And if I'm wrong, tell me the city that has more. But we need more and more of them. And when your children are run over by hit-and-run drivers, they're the ones responsible. The blood's on your hands.
Thank you. If I can get Michael, come forward. Michael, carry on. Item three.
Thank you. I'd like to know what consideration goes into giving somebody a liquor license? Donations? Because that seems to be the only criteria to get a license. I mean, what part of this do you people not see? Alcoholism is the biggest problem in the city of Los Angeles, which is the beginning of most of your homelessness in the city of Los Angeles. Alcohol is a gateway drug. Okay? For those of you who don't believe it, take a look outside your window right here, and you'll see it. Alcoholism at its best. As a recovering alcoholic, I'm speaking from the heart and not from some political agenda. The more liquor license you guys hand out, as if it were a gift card, the more alcoholism you guys agree to. And then you turn around and you wanna get on a panel for homelessness, and you wanna get a panel for this, and you wanna stop that. It stops right here with the liquor licenses. I mean, people before me has just said it. How difficult is it to walk across the street for a beer? It's not. But convenience, I don't want to. So you come and you get a license, and you serve more liquor. How many drunk drivings do we have in the city of Los Angeles? Tens of thousands annually. How many murders, how many homicides do we have because directly of alcoholism? Tens of thousands. For Mr. Buscaino to imply that, uh, a speaker here is drunk.
Stay on the subject, Michael.
Okay. It is attacking the public. It's not right. I mean, talk about alcoholism, there it is right there in a nutshell. Thank you.
And, uh, congratulations to you, and you know what I'm talking about. Okay? Uh, do we have Mr. Spindler? No, we don't, so let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Oh, Mr. Weezar, did I miss you?
Yes, I, I requested to speak, uh, and I, I'd like to ask if we could continue this item for a week, please.
Which one, this one?
Uh, yes, number three, yes.
Okay, well then, let's vote, let's, uh, uh, vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, and, uh, you'd like to continue it again, how long?
For a week.
Okay, that, I believe, Madam Clerk, October 23rd?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, uh, continued next week. And I'm sorry I missed you first time out.
Thank you, Ms. Previn.
Okay. Oh, and before I move on to item, uh, one, on the item we just continued, Mr. Weezar, we're gonna close the public comment on that item. Okay, now we're gonna move to item one. Uh, Mr. Spindler. Does Mr. Walsh have any more time? Uh, if I could have Angela Parks. Oh, no, we're continuing those items, which one? Eric Eisenberg, come forward. We're here, come on. Come on.
And Mr. President, as she's walking up, there are requests to continue items 1A, 1C, 1D, 1L, and 1O for two weeks to October 30th.
Okay, so-
Okay, so your item has been continued.
And so two weeks?
What was that date again?
The 30th. Okay, so come back on the-
Yes, it is the 30th, so two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
No, you're welcome. So now, is it, uh, Eric Eisenberg? Please come forward.
And Mr. President, there's one more request for continuation on 1F for two weeks to October 30th.
Well, that would be Mr. Eisenberg.
Correct, and I shall, uh, take a pass. Thank you.
Okay, so why, wait. Let us, uh, the request is for two weeks, that's what, October 30th?
Yes.
So, uh, your item will be continued, uh, until October 30th, which would give you an opportunity to work with your, uh, council office for a couple of weeks. Okay, so that item's continued. Atusha Rad? Nasiemi Atusha, Nasiemi Rad? Not here. Israel. Esca Mella? Israel Escamella? Israel Escamella Adams? Okay, uh, not here, so, uh, Mr. Buscaino? Are you on the, is that a technical glitch, or?
We, uh, we continued 1F, thank you, sir.
Okay. So let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Madam Clerk, I believe that brings us to general public comment.
That's correct.
I'm gonna call on Mr. Spindler. Ms. Ramirez. And Mr. Walsh. Please come forward.
Thank you. Yesterday, City Council President Urbesson threw me out of the, uh, the city chambers because a Chango Latino gangbanger named Daniel, who was gangstalking me here, yet I didn't even know him. Um, we were not able to speak. We were both thrown out. Today, I, well, today I wanted to speak on item number four, on the appointment of Ms. Melinda Murray to the city, um, Ethics Commission. I was denied that opportunity, no public participation. Yet I wanted to ask Ms. Murray, who worked over 20 years in the DA's office prosecuting sex crimes, fraud, and domestic violence crimes. She's no doubt worked under LA County District Attorney Jackie Lacy, who, as we all know, has failed to combat the wetback and Latino-Chango epidemic, uh, problems that we've had here in the city. Furthermore, Mrs. Murray, what have you done to help victims of crime and victims of gangstalking, like theft, property damage crimes, uh, committed against us? And can you ethically and fairly perform your job if it involves blacks, blacks, blacks? Because many of them are Jamaicans, Haitians, and African Americans.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Followed by Mr. Previn.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. Mr. Buscaino gets up and wastes the time insulting me. Why don't you come off? Go downstairs and insult me face-to-face, punk. Okay, now, there was-
I'm sorry, hold this time for a minute. I have to collect my, myself. I have to, hold this time. I, I gotta get it together. That was his Clint Eastwood impersonate. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Walsh.
And you have no right to interrupt me for personal comments, under the law. Okay, the Dodgers. I'm not saying this, but everyone's saying it. The Dodgers lost because God punished them. Because a white boy broke a Panamanian. The Met player was from Panama, and he broke his leg. And I tell you damn, there isn't, Hispanic doesn't know. If it had been a white, white man who, uh, that had, uh, if it had been a brown man who'd broken a white boy's leg.
Mr. Walsh, that's not in the city's jurisdiction, so it's not.
The Dodgers is under your jurisdiction, punk.
Not what you're talking about.
Uh, you definitely under-
Not what you, I wanna hear you say, what'd you call me?
You hear.
Your time's expired. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. You are disrupting the, uh, the meeting. And we will all pray for you. Okay, I, uh, I think it's a Gaston? Gastoon or Gastoon Montero? Please, uh, correct me on that, sir.
Thank you. My name is Gaston Michael Montero. I'm here to bring good news to the city of Los Angeles. Uh, I don't know protocol, but this is my first time making a pitch to the committee. Uh, I, I'm a producer-director of cultural arts, and I started this project about two years ago. I, I'm starting, uh, this year, uh, and with, uh, together with the United Nations Association of Beverly Hills, we're launching the Los Angeles LA Folclorama. I wanna tell you that the LA Folclorama Cultural, uh, Project, it brings in, uh, jobs. It provides, uh, good, uh, feelings, uh, to community centers and, uh, the ethnics in the city of Los Angeles. Branch productions, I would like to pass out some, uh, some of the, uh, opportunities, uh, to, to all the members so that you can get more informed. We ask for support, uh, from the, uh, from the, uh, city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Barajas? Mr. Marine, come forward. Arminik? You're back? Okay, so, so you'll come, uh, right after Mr. Marine.
All right, um, well, um, in the last few days, I, uh, had, um, some several breakthroughs, I suppose. Um, there was a Politicon event on Saturday, which resulted, after my confrontation with one of the panel, um, assembly, resulted on the Monday interview with someone named Jesse Lee Peterson. After that, we went to the Democratic event, uh, in Nevada. The thing is, is that I think Americans should understand that we are dealing with something unprecedented. The very fact that the only real thing that actually was said on that debate was the Glass-Steagall Act proved to anybody who was listening that that was the issue. That we're dealing with a collapse. And, and a lot of people have to understand that nothing else matters except the Glass-Steagall Act. Everything else, like Obama's murder rampage, that proves that we are dealing with something evil.
Yes, as you know, before Janice Hahn left for Congress, she made her colleagues and union officials in LA aware of the fact that anybody that goes to negotiating table and on account of the money left on the table is gonna be on the menu. Consequently, the members of this council are on the menu. For the money employees never use is shown in the heckling and coal ammo we use. And that were used by public and union officials in lieu of making payments to laces and kelpers. See that statue back there? He looks like a black man. And that's the dark, that shows the dark side, 'cause he, he's a no-counting some bitch. See? And now y'all living in that, using that, carrying that same spirit into, into this council. So cut that shit out. It's time for Mr. Wesson to change and act like a white man. Thank you.
All righty then. Haven't seen you in a long time.
Yes, sir. Yeah, uh, um, um, good morning. Uh, City Council member, good morning, fellow Angelov. Uh, yeah. My name is Arminik Nudjan. I'm actually, mm, progressive blogger at youtube.com. Yeah, my name is Arminak Nudjan, I'm actually progressive blogger at YouTube.com and liberal activist. Well, today I want to propose not to cut business taxes, you know, anywhere in Los Angeles without attaching stimulus of adding more jobs, you know, in the last three months, you know? Otherwise, you know, our city will lose its revenue, and, you know, and we'll see more homelessness in the streets of Los Angeles, which we're trying to actually avoid. And I would ask you to open a regular section eight for poor Angelinos, and also ask you to allow only selling marijuana without any content of tetrahydrocannabinoids or THC, because federal council statute prohibits sales of marijuana, it makes it illegal, and...
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Michael Kerion, Mr. Previn, I did call you, so come on up. Michael, you're after Mr. Previn. Go right ahead.
Yes, it's Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And yesterday, as you know, you approved sort of five closed-session items, one of which was a $2.5 million legal settlement that was written about in the newspaper. We have to do a little bit of a better job, sir, of permitting the public comment on those items. It's a weird system you have with the committee meeting where only a couple guys show up, there's no notice of the amount, and then that's your opportunity to speak on the item. When the money comes out, when the fine clerk reads it into the record, we're done. So that's a problem. And the other question that we've been looking at, and nobody seems to wanna discuss it, is the outside council expenditures versus the in-house city attorney. Now, today, as you heard me say, welcome, Krikorian, he's arrived, so he'll get credit for today. You know, we approved a lot of new city attorney positions. It's a lot of in-house guys. So maybe you've done an analysis, and this would be a Public Record Act request for that analysis, but Mike Dundas up in city attorney said, you know, they don't really keep track of the city attorney's assignments. That's a big problem, because we have a kind of a out-of-control entity in the city attorney. He's running for office all the time.
Thank you.
That's one of the problems. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael, come forward.
Thank you. I can speak on a couple of items real quick. One, in CD14, we've been dealing with an issue for the past 11, 12 years. And for a councilman's office to say a city attorney doesn't return a call for more than two weeks, no wonder it's taking this long. We're probably gonna take another 11 years to get the problem solved, because nobody returns calls within two to three weeks, or maybe longer. For Mr. Buscaino to call a member of the public drunk just because he doesn't like the public comment, this is where the bickering between public and council members escalates. So if you want it to escalate, please don't interrupt the public when they start calling council members' names. It starts here with Buscaino calling people drunks. Mr. Englander, he doesn't like the way the neighborhood council is running Echo Park, so he personally wants to dismantle it. It is not one of his puppets. Let's read into it, you'll find out, he wants to dismantle it because they don't agree with him and his palms tics.
Thank you. Brian Barajas? Mr. Barajas, I do not see you. Madam Clerk, this closes general public comment. Brings us where?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred. Announcements, members, announcements. We'll go to Ms. Martinez first.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, as many of you know, today is National Memography Day. One in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime. Breast cancer is the second-leading cause of death among women. Each year is estimated that over 220,000 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and more than 4,000 women will die. Although breast cancer is... In men is rare, it's estimated that 2,150 men will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and approximately 410 will die each year. Today, we make LA go pink to raise awareness about this disease and the importance of getting a mammogram. I wanna thank all of you for supporting the efforts to light City Hall pink tonight in honor of Memography Awareness Day, and as I also ask you to use the hashtag LA Goes Pink on all your social media today. And I just wanna thank all of you who helped sponsor City Hall going pink, and Van Nuys City Hall is also going pink tonight. We have the LAX pylons and DWP building, and US Bank have all supported our efforts to increase awareness about gaining a mammography. So thank you very much, colleagues.
And no, thank you for all the work that you do. Many of us have gone pink today because of you. Mr. O'Farrell, before I call on you, I want to... This council wants to wish you in advance a happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
We understand your birthday is tomorrow.
Okay.
So, birthday boy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President. So, colleagues, our LGBT veterans of foreign wars need our assistance. I am so happy to announce that tomorrow, at... From 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock PM, at the Los Angeles LGBT Center Village at Ed Gould Plaza, they're having what's called Stand Down at the Village. There will be screenings and enrollment services for all of our veterans to get assistance that they so desperately need, including VA enrollment, benefits counseling, housing assistance, medical screenings, mental health counseling, employment opportunities, financial screenings. There'll also be free lunch and entertainment as well. And again, it's called Stand Down, helping our LGBT veterans with helping get on with their lives, and the address is 1125 North Macadam Place. Again, 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock, and I encourage any veteran who needs assistance to stop by, and you will get some TLC. Thank you.
Okay, now, announcements. Now, in fact, I'm gonna ask Mr. Harris Dawson or Mr. Pre... Mr. Harris Dawson, we do... The three of us have an announcement for Saturday. Would you, you know, add that to your announcements as well?
Thank you, and my colleague, Mr. Price. We invite everybody out to Crenshaw Boulevard tomorrow for the fantastic Taste of Soul. It'll take place beginning at 9:00 in the morning and go all day. We'll have two stages, one by KJHL and one by the Wave Radio Station. We'll have hundreds of food vendors there, along with community services and other information and other vendors. We expect over a couple hundred thousand people for Taste of Soul, so it's one of the biggest events that we have in our part of the city. So we ask you all to join us, and the entire city, to come on down, take the Expo Line, if you're worried about being able to find parking. It'll take you right there to the Taste of Soul tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM.
Okay, it is a phenomenal event. I think it's the 10th anniversary. We've all... I think I've been to nine, Mr. Price has as well. All members are welcome. It is a phenomenal event, and the food is unbelievable. You know, diet tonight, come tomorrow, and then dig out. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. Weston, that sounds very appetizing. But I will be busy doing stuff in my own district, which I'd like folks to know about. All day long on Saturday at the Mar Vista Recreation Center on Woodbine Avenue is the Mar Vista Community Fall Festival, cosponsored by the Mar Vista Community Council. Number city departments will be their information booths, and I will be holding pop-up office hours from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. And on Sunday, in the nearby community of Del Rey, all day long at Glen Allen Park, there will be the Del Rey Day, and I will be holding pop-up office hours there from noon to 2:00. And if you can't make either of those things, I know that Mr. Weezer has something exciting on Sunday to tell you about.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's another Ciclavia this Sunday, happening mostly in the central part of Los Angeles. If you need more information, please look it up on the website. A great route that goes through downtown LA, part of the east side, touches onto the south LA. We're very excited about this, because this has now become a mainstay. When we first announced it, we talked about how we are replicating what was happening in Colombia, in Bogota, parts of Mexico, and other parts of Latin America, but now, here in Los Angeles, through the support of Metro and the city of LA, this has become a regular occurrence throughout the city of LA. So, fifth anniversary, actually, and Mr. Krikorian reminded me this is the fifth anniversary. So please come out to the central part of LA. If you love architecture, history, and see the historic part of LA, you're gonna go through a lot of great streets in downtown LA. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to also make an announcement in my district. We have the 25th Annual Sherman Oaks Street Fair. This year, fair will feature about 100,000 people, 200 vendors and displays, a major concert stage with Stray Cats, Lee Rocker, and a celebration of the 50th anniversary of the Batmobile and the 90th birthday of its creator, George Barris. Other attractions include the classic car and hot rod show presented by BP, a Ford Community Performance Art Stage, a Wells Fargo Carnival and Fun Zone, a food court and food truck fair, a beer and cocktail garden, and much, much more, much, much more. So if you're in Sherman Oaks, please come and join us this Saturday. On Ventura, Ventura Boulevard will be closed. Will be closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Are there any more announcements? Then if I could ask everyone to please rise? Okay, I'm gonna look to my right side. No adjournings, Mr. Weezer on your side, Mr. Rue. Okay, now, I am looking to the left side. There are no adjourning motions. I do want to... Before we adjourn this meeting, we need to circulate. I think there is a motion, so before I adjourn, if I can get the copies so that it can be circulated, and at that point in time, we will adjourn today's meeting. This is one of those moments where Mr. Rue, we miss Mr. Labange. Well, he... So there has been...
CD6 in Sun Valley, he dropped off pumpkin bread.
Prepared by the nuns.
Prepared by the nuns.
Prepared by the nun.
So, he's gonna make his way around, I heard. Stay tuned.
I'm happy to say that Tom Labange, I saw him last weekend where he was the emcee of the Folar Fandango along the Los Angeles River, and he was in typical Tom Labange form. He did a terrific job, and it was good to see him back in action.
And, Mr. President, if... Speaking of Folar, if I may, the mayor, as well as Councilmember Rue, and myself, and Supervisor Kuhl, yesterday had a very special moment on the banks of the LA River, when we welcomed representatives of the Department of Interior and every kid in the park to announce the partnership of the city and the county in dedicating $6 million towards completing the engineering work for the revitalization of the river throughout the San Fernando Valley and elsewhere. And it really was one of those moments where we link the history of the city with the future of the city. We announced the creation of the Juan Baptista de Anza Trail in the Sepulveda Basin, and at the same time, invested this money in linking together the wonderful recreational assets that we have in the San Fernando Valley along the banks of the river. This engineering project will link all those assets together into one single, long, usable bike path, landscaped area, recreational area, which will be transformative for much of the San Fernando Valley. And I wanna applaud Councilmember Rue for his role in that, and all the other valley members who devoted part of their Quimby funds in order to make this a reality.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino.
We should all say something. Well, Mitch, happy birthday, and together, everyone, happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, Mitch O'Farrell, happy birthday to you. The motion just got in. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Happy birthday, Mitch, we love you.
We adjourned.